The two components, there was no sanitary sewer involved fortunately in this case. But the water main needed to be replaced. We had temporary service lines in the winter time. It just wasn't a good situation. So we had to do that fairly quickly and we could not go through the statutory, the 429 special assessment process. So in essence, the city councilor, city paid for the water main improvement in this area. But the, that, we were, we had time enough before the street would be constructed after the water main was installed to do the street improvement and curb and gutter. So we were able to go through the 429 assessment. We've, we've conducted each of the steps up until this point and tonight is the adoption of the final assessment role which Greg Anderson has prepared and is inserted in your packet. And the council earlier decided that these, the assessment would be done on a per lot basis, which you see there, there are nine assessable lots. And the amount of assessment was based on the 20% of the total cost of street as, based on our assessment policy, 20% of the cost of the street, 100% of the cost of the street, but 20% of that. And then curb and gutter had a different depreciation rate according to our schedule. So that was 19 years into it. So we did 19 twentieths of the curb and gutter cost because the, the last time the curb and gutter was installed was 19 years prior to this project. So there was still one year left that we did not assess or did not account for. So that's what you see in there. So it was a total of 18,000 some odd dollars divided by nine units, 2,000 and some $38 thereabouts.
At this time, we will open the public hearing for discussion on the adoption of the resolution for the assessments of the second street, southwestern street improvements. Is anyone wishing to address the council this evening for the, during the public hearing for the assessments? Seeing as there are, there's no one here wishing to address us under the public hearing, at this time, we will close the public hearing and the chair will take a motion to approve the resolution for the second street southwest improvement project.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Merle, a second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's get back to here. Okay, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending July the 2nd, 2015. Item B are the meeting minutes for the June 16th, 2015 city council meeting. Item C is sale of the 2001 Chevrolet utility truck. Item D, approved payment to SEH for additional $900 for trunk highway 52 highway safety assessment report. Item E is approved calls for sole borrowings. Is there, are there any items anybody wishes to bring down this evening? Seeing as there are none, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as approved, or submitted.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. That moves us on to item eight this evening, council business. With the police supervisor hire being removed, we will make the resolution 2138, item A, ordering preparation of report on improvement for River Road water main request.
Not sure where I start with this, but the, as is noted again in the memo, the Public Works Commission has looked at this issue over the past quite a few months. It's not even more than a year, but we did, we did receive a request, an official letter from Carol Lee Stock related to the issues that she has trying to sell a home, sell her house at that loc, at the 1014 River Road location. She has a well on her property that serves her property and the property on the city hall side of her house. We've, SEH provided estimates to install, and there's, there's a septic, the septic system also, and she needs to replace her septic system in order to sell the home to, for the purchaser to get bank financing. So we looked at, with Greg Anderson and the Public Works Commission about possibility of installing sanitary sewer. And maybe Greg, you might want to give a little overview of the discussions on that as far as the water, the sewer, and the whole situation with the ceiling of the well and so forth.
Council's familiar with the two, the subject parcel, just north of the city hall. The nearest sanitary sewer to those lots is in St. Clair Street, which is the county road up by Egg Partners. Or there's a sanitary manhole that serves the city, city hall and the government center directly out, straight to the east of basically council chambers here on the other side of River Road. That flows under the tracks and east. Sewer up in St. Clair flows east also. Both of them are higher, if you will, than the house services, so it would have to be pumped either direction. We looked at three options. Two options would be to go to the north and connect to the sewer main up in St. Clair. Those would serve both the two houses, two parcels directly north of the city property plus the one at the corner. And as Ron mentioned, those costs, you know, are 108 to 161,000. Just the biggest concern is we've got rock excavation. We'll have to put in a pump station and bring that sewer down and replace the road. The third option would be to put in a small pump station for the two houses, the stock parcel and the one to the south, and pump it south along the east side of River Road to this manhole. There again, not 100% sure we can do that. We're trying to avoid digging up River Road because it's in good shape. But that one, we're guessing is probably about $85,000. So neither, none of the three are real attractive options as far as costs, you know, if, and then it would be up to the council to decide how much, if any, is the city participation of those costs and how much would be the property owner's cost. We looked at water. The well was brought up, as Ron mentioned, the shared well is also an issue for citing an onsite system on the stock parcel. There is water that comes down River Road. There's a hydrant a little bit north of the stock parcel on the east side of River Road. What we would look to do is review extending that water roughly 185 to 200 feet down, put a hydrant in and two water service stubs for the two houses that they would connect to and then could abandon the well. That could change the offset requirements for an onsite system on the property. Now, right now with the well and the river and the size of the parcel, nothing I don't think will fit on an onsite system. You take the well out of the occasion, now she's on city water. It's likely they'll be able to get an onsite system designed that would work there if the council were to allow them to install an onsite system versus hooking up the city sewer.
Doesn't our ordinance say though that once that system fails, it has to go to the city sewer? And it says shall? It does no if, ands, or buts about it?
I believe it has, also talks about availability too, but you're right. It is, well, the city would have to make-
It doesn't say availability.
...an allowance for them to not hook up the city sewer.
I mean, if we start making revisions for one, then we're going to have to start making them for all and, you know, that nobody's going to be on city sewer and water.
Well, the cost was a, was a big factor because of the rock in getting the sewer and, you know, it was deemed, it's not the only place in town that still uses a septic. And we, we'd like to get away from that if it was, if it was more feasible, but-
Well, I mean, that's why we have some money set aside. If we have to use part of that to get it done, we got to get it done. I mean-
But it would be an excessive cost to the two properties in question too. As, you know, if you're going to, depending on which of those items you, three options that are talked about, you know, anywhere from 85 to 160,000, even under the 429 process, it's pretty spendy for the homes.
Should have been thought of when we did River Road to begin with.
My name is Carol Lee Stock and I own the property at 1014 River Road. This was brought up many, many years ago to put city water and sewer and the council declined at that time. So we've really had no options other than this. My question to Greg is the $85,000 option that would come down this way, does that include sewer and water? Just sewer?
Just the sewer cost.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
So is it, is it my understanding, Ron, that what we're looking at doing here tonight is to get a feasibility report on both the water and sewer options or just the water?
The, the request is just for the water tonight. But this had been at the Public Works Commission, I don't know how many times-
A lot of times.
So it's, it's, with the letter being submitted by Carol Lee, it was time to bring it, bring it to, to council level and, you know, decide what to do with, with this. And I knew there was at least some interest in maybe extending the sanitary sewer. At whose cost, I guess we'd have to determine that, but-
Okay, so the, the request is to do the water at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The history behind this whole thing is they want to, they want to, if they cap the well, they can do a new sewer according to the county. The county said they would leave it up to us if we would allow a sewer system, a private sewer system. So this is why we're talking just hooking up the water so that in capping her well, hooking her up to city water so that she can sell her property and put in a private septic.
I've got the county's land use directors here. Can we get a ruling from them on that, what they-
I'm Lisa Hanny and I've got Jason Peterson with me. He is our sanitarian and well and septic expert here. We wrote a letter concerning this issue back in April this year again, and our only concern was you've got those two properties right there. If we get water, that's addressing one of the issues, but there's still no guarantee that they're going to have space or going to be able to do a septic on that site. The property to the south of Ms. Stock, when their system goes, the ordinance right now says that you have to have a compliance upon sale, meaning that your septic has to be in compliance before you can sell it or you put money away in escrow. That's got even a smaller parcel. So basically what we are just suggesting is that you take a long look at this area. If this is the area that you want to continue to have homes there, you might want to take a longer view on this than, because when they come back in, the people to the south, if their system fails, when their system fails, they're going to be back in front of you again asking for variance and actually it's really going to be difficult for them to place it on their site. So that's why we're asking just to take a long look at it, see if the septic is an option down in that area or not. But yes, having the water, the city water that's, you know, fairly close to the property, that will solve part of the problem if a septic can be cited on, on the site.
Okay, so the septic, does each one of the houses have their own septic or is the septic shared right there?
The well is shared.
It's the well that's shared.
Right.
Each house has an independent septic system.
So you're saying even if the, if the well gets capped now, she might not have enough room on her property or she does?
They'll have to design it and they'll have to see if they've got enough room for the whole system. So, and she's got, from my understanding, she's got bigger parcels than the person to the south of them, south of her.
Well, we were certainly led to believe in our public works meetings that supposedly from the county that she would be able to do that if she got, you know, got rid of the, the shared well.
Yeah, that was my understanding too.
Yeah, and now, now I'm hearing something different now.
We, we sent a letter to, to the city and, and said that, talked about the water being the issue because they have the well and not meeting those setbacks. But we did point it out that, you know, currently there's three individual parcels on that road. We've reviewed our files. Only one of the parcels has a permit and SST has a septic permit, which is over 20 years old or near 20 years old, meaning they're very old and they're going to be, having to be replaced. And so, you know, that's part of our new ordinance. And also, you know, we talked about, let's see, city's not going to require the River Road residents to hook up to the utilities. They'll need to provide variances for the residents, make part of the information submitted to, to the board of adjustment for the variances. There's a lot of things to go on if they need to get variances. Just because she has the water there, nobody's done a design yet because they weren't able to because they didn't know what the setbacks were going to be if that well existed. So right now, there's really no design. So if, if she gets a contractor that can fit one in there and meet all the requirements without, I don't know if there's any variances to any of that, on any of that, but it's still iffy. You know, I guess that's why we were thinking if you took a longer look and got a feasibility study for the sewer too, if you wish to continue to have homes and that kind of thing in that area. Because otherwise, we're going to be back in front of you again when the next guy's system fails.
What I'm hearing is you seem to be of the opinion that maybe there shouldn't be homes back there.
No, I didn't say that. I just said the city should take a long look at that. And if they're going to do that, they basically got two choices. If they're going to keep homes there, they're going to have to take a long look because every one of these residents is going to come in for variance because they're not going to be able to satisfy the setbacks and stuff for, for septics. Ms. Lee might, but I don't know about the others. So that's kind of the, the longer view of that, that road.
Yeah, but now, but then you're asking Carol Lee to basically take a crap shoot on, yeah, if we put the water in, she might be able to do a septic or she might not be able to. That's, that's not a good basis for the, a decision for her to help sell her home and putting in, you know, the sanitary sewer while nice is going to be pretty costly for the two homeowners because that's, there's only the two homes there.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what your, your schedule is for assessments. I don't know. I'm not, not even bringing that part up. I know that's part of the consideration. But again, looking long-term at that, you're going to have these other homeowners come in for variances too, and they might have a harder time getting a septic in there.
If, if and when their septic fails.
Or they sell the house and it doesn't meet compliance.
Ron?
I might make a suggestion in light of this little bit information in that feasibility report could still be ordered but to include the sanitary sewer, then you can later, you know, during that process, have the discussion about how much should be assessed, you know, whether any, all, none, whatever, should be assessed in both water and sewer and go from there. But then you'll have the, then you'll have all the information. Greg's got a lot of it put together anyway, but he's, he'd have to put it in a formal feasibility report format, but-
Well, I think it's safe to say for, at least Merle and I, had we known this in public works many months or a year ago, we could already be well past as if, our, our information from the county seemed to have been slightly faulty. And so I'm a little disappointed.
Well, I don't know if it was necessarily from the county or from the contractor that said, because it seems to me that Carol Lee had a couple contractors that said, if you cap the well, I can guarantee we can put a sewer system in there.
Right. But I think what the, what, what you're saying is that they're looking at the longer term if the other property goes bad.
We did look at that. I'm, because I was saying, what about the house up on the end too? There's a third property up there that isn't hooked up to city water and sewer. And if we got to go that way, then we do all three of them for city water and sewer.
What about the business over there? Are they connected to sewer and water?
They should be in, in St. Clair Street, shouldn't they?
Yeah.
You mean Egg Partners?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're hooked up.
And then the one on the corner there is not?
Right.
Right.
Because we did talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
You know, that hook, you know, to, to go north and hook them all up to city water and sewer.
We're, we're just trying to forewarn you of what the next properties might have in front of you in a matter of time.
Yeah, and if, and if the property next door has a, has a septic system that's similar in age to Carol Lee's, then it's subject to fail.
It might not meet the compliance inspection requirements.
Right.
So what, I think perhaps maybe even expanding on what I suggested is that we should probably have resolution for you for the next meeting that includes sanitary, water, and then perhaps an expanded area.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, I mean, I, I think, you know, we, we got to look at the long-term process of this. I mean, I mean, if they can put a system in there that'll last 20 years, I mean, then 20 years from now, we won't be on the council, I don't think. I mean, but-
Do we, do we want to include the, the street too, as long as we're going the rest of the way?
You mean doing a full regular street like we have up to the-
Yeah, because we stopped just a few when we did this, you know, because-
Right, because it wasn't wanted at that time up the street.
Well, you know, I mean, could we even as we're getting ready to start looking at the West Side Two project, could we maybe include all of that into one big project? Because I mean, by, by this time, at this point, it's going to be hard to get all that stuff done before the end of the year anyway.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we, we could include it in that, then it might be more feasible for, for everybody all the way around.
That probably makes some sense because even with the process initiated tonight, even if there would have been a resolution approved just for the water, we would have been looking at awarding bids in the October 6th council meeting. So even after that, and then they've got 30 days to enter into a contract, so that would have been really pushing it also.
Yeah, I mean, before the November freezes start coming in and stuff. I mean, I mean, we're really pushing it at that point, but I mean, that might be a better option to look at long range and maybe include it in the, as we start looking at the West Side Two project for this next spring. So should we, at this time, go ahead and table this until the next meeting?
I'd like to say one more, one more thing. I want to thank particularly the public works people and Ron and Dave and Greg and Tom who've been so helpful through this and it's a mess, but I'm hoping we'll-
I feel, I feel bad for you.
Well, I'm hoping it, something gets settled soon.
And we appreciate, we appreciate your patience. I mean, because I, and I know they get worse then, I mean, when this process is going on, but I mean, I think we, you know, we need to look at doing it the right way. So it'd be good for you and, and good for everybody at the, in the same time.
Okay, well, keep me posted. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carol Lee.
I think that's the best way to do it though then is just-
I agree.
Yeah, look at doing the whole thing.
Doing the whole thing and, and then we've got all our bases covered up there. We don't have to worry about doing it in- One more thing, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to, to funds available for the city, some city participation in this process?
Yeah, there may be and we'll see what we can do. We'll have to look at the whole process. That's what we're going to look at doing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to reports. Or do we, or did we table it? Do we need a motion to table it at this time?
Well, I'll second a motion to table.
Okay, we got a motion by Merle and a second by Bill to table the water and sewer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Moves us on to reports. Mr. Maroney.
Just got one, that is, the planning commission will not be meeting next Monday night at 6:30. That's all. I have nothing else.
Tom?
Would just like to ask the public's help. We've had kind of a spree now of people dumping off couches, whatnot on people's boulevards a, as well as dumps. So I would like to, if the public could help us assist if they see something like that going on, get a license number, call Jeff, let him know what's going on. We get the call from the homeowner and they say, there's a couch on my boulevard and it's not mine. So I'd like to stop that quite quickly if we could.
How's the diaper and rag situation in the sewer plant getting any better?
Flushable wipes will be an issue as long as they sell them, you know. I, I say most people out of sight is out of mind. As it goes through my toilet, I don't care where it goes. So I, I don't know if that's ever going to be solved until some of these cities start taking on the providers of these and the makers of these baby wipes.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe we could send them a bill. Yeah.
Relative to the issue Tom raised on the dumping of furniture, license plates are helpful. Really what would be helpful is if somebody, you see somebody unloading a couch, a chair or anything onto a boulevard or some area where, you know, dumping is what they're doing, 911. Please call 911. It's going to give you dispatcher immediately, they can get an officer started there. We would much rather get in the area, locate the person as they're driving away or still in the process and be able to charge them and, and take care of it all that night, which is probably also going to include making them load it back up rather than the city incurring the expense of that disposal. So please, 911.
Yep.
The other thing is I, I heard Dave mention that his Monday evening is freeing up, which is probably a good thing. This, is the Art and Wine Fest this weekend? No, one week.
The following.
Following weekend.
Oh, I was going to say Dave could spend the whole weekend having wine then and looking at art, but that still frees up for Dave. But the Art and Wine Fest is coming up. I was talking with Keith Smiley today. Apologize, I couldn't remember the exact date. I'm still recovering from a, a week of fair and, and fun activities. But that'll be coming up. It shouldn't be too much of an inconvenience for any of our residents. They will have some reduced traffic flow on 8th and 9th Street from the pool to Egg Partners because of the pedestrians crossing and stuff, but it won't be closed or anything. It'd just be, you know, one lane of traffic or narrower lanes from what it sounded like. So, you know, for, for people that are using that route on a regular basis, just bear that in mind. You've seen it before with, with that event and it shouldn't be much of a problem. Look forward to the influx of people coming to Cannon Falls, much like we did for the parade and for the fair, bringing people to our confined community and letting them see what we have to offer is always a good thing. That's all I have.
Thanks. Ron?
I have nothing.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Nothing?
I'm good.
Nothing.
And I have nothing. At this time, the chair will take a motion to adjourn.